Okay, welcome to a meeting of the Athens City Council. This is a regular meeting as opposed to committee meetings which are held every other week. It's on or about 7:30 Monday, February 20th, 2012. We do have a quorum of council members, six of seven council members are here, so we do have a quorum which means we can vote on issues. We're going to begin with disposition of minutes from the regular session of council held on February 6th, 2012. Could I have a motion to accept those minutes?
Motion.
Second.
Second, motion and second. All those in favor of accepting these minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, they are accepted, thank you. I have one small item for communication. We have a liquor permit transfer from 19 South Court. A bar on 19 South Court is closing. The liquor permit is being transferred to Wilson Enterprises of Athens at 33 North Court. I think that's a new Cuban restaurant that they're proposing here.
Yep.
They're covered classes, interestingly, in this one, D1, D2, D3, and D3A. All of those are for beer, wine, and spirituous liquor on premises only, so this is not any type of carryout business. It's on premises only. Reports and communications from other elected officials. Mayor Wyll?
Nothing much. I think I gave you a roster of the J-PAC Committee as they are in right now. There's a couple vacancies, Navy Association members, and members from an underrepresented class or minority. I think that covers about four positions from my side missing. They had their first meeting last week, it was an organization meeting. I believe Steve Patterson actually ended up to be the chair of it, so just to let you know what's going on. Other than that, I have nothing else.
Can you tell us what J-PAC stands for?
Oh, sorry. It's the Joint Police Advisory Council between both OUPD and Athens PD with the concept of getting better communication for events and issues.
Thank you. Auditor Kathy Heck?
First, could I ask Council to approve the finance reports from January?
I think they just did, didn't they?
Oh, did you do that? No, that was the -- they did the minutes, but sorry, I think I sent an email out a week or so ago, but no reminder, sorry.
Okay, sure. Could I have a motion to accept the auditor's report for the month of January?
January.
We move in second. All those in favor of accepting this report signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you. I actually do have a report tonight. I warned you, Council, a couple weeks ago, that I have year-end reports from my office. I've handed out copies of the information that was given to me by my staff, and I think I will start off by thanking Council. I appreciate your support regarding the centralization of income tax collection by the state. You passed a resolution last year. Anyone who is so inclined would be great to write letters. It is still an issue out there. I've gone to some meetings, and of course you've seen a lot of the letters and information I've been getting. I forward most of it, not quite all, so anyway, I'd appreciate that. It's still an issue out there, and we are meeting and trying to work with the state, and the OML is working with them to come up with uniformity as far as income tax collection, hoping that that will die down, but my feeling is that will make it easier for them to take it over, so we'll see. But it's gaining momentum right now, it has not died, so any support you are inclined to give for that, I appreciate. I'd also like to thank Council for their support for software and server upgrades in regards to appropriating money. We do everything that we do on our computers, and we have a lot of information that we store, and I feel it's very important to keep up to date on that, and I appreciate your support in that. So I'll start my report very quickly. I didn't bother copying this and handing it out, I probably already killed a tree tonight, but last year I reported on the fact that Council and the administration changed the policy for take-home vehicles, non-emergency use, about three years ago, and so this year we had 41 days of take-home, non-emergency use by three people. While that is up from last year, which was only three days, it is way down from 2008, where there were 821 days of take-home vehicles. So the administration has worked very hard. I suspect that the one person who increased the days just a little bit this year is an emergency-type responder, and it probably had to do with those kinds of issues. So if anybody wants a copy of that, that's fine, but as I said, in three years we've gone from 821 take-home days to 41, which I think is great, and that was done by the administration. Okay, and your little packet, I'm not going to read everything, but I'd like to hit on some interesting things that we have going. First is recap of the deputy auditor activities. As you know, we revised Certified Resources with the county, which is also listed on the Unappropriated Balance Sheet. This is a form that we give you every time we update it, which is very important so you know what money is available for additional appropriations. Our deputy auditor also supported the law director this past year in their response to EPA citations for financial reporting, and the law director came to a very nice conclusion for the city for this year for that issue that's been hanging out there for many, many years. We paid off two notes at Hocking Valley Bank totaling about 1.6 million. One was our EPA litigation debt that's also been hanging out there for many, many years, finally got that paid off. The reason it is so high is there's almost 1.5 million that we paid off on a bus loan for transit buses that we took out, bought the buses, and then were reimbursed by the Department of Transportation. We've also implemented online payment of medical and pharmaceutical bills in our office, and you will see throughout the report that we are constantly adding technological updates to our processes. Accounts payable, issued 5,019 checks for a total of $13,182,000 this year. Processed over 6,000 vouchers. We also, this would be Heather, tracks uniform purchases for 140 city employees. She compiles monthly reports from our finance system and distributes them to all departments. We don't give everybody everything, although Council does get everything that I get, so does the mayor, but so she compiles these to fit the needs of the different departments for the information that they need. And we also started scanning and indexing our vouchers for accounts payable this year. The administrative assistant year in review, one of her main responsibilities has to do with fixed assets. She entered 191 this year for a total of $2.9 million. Seven of those 191 items were vehicles with a total purchase price of $2.6 million, and the other items entered are classified as equipment, which could be anything from computers to chainsaws. 140 assets were disposed of, traded, or sold. The total cost of those items was $295,000. The amount the city received at disposal was $16,600, and that information is also being scanned into our DocuScan system. She tracks 79 city-owned properties, which sounds like a lot. Many of those properties are just a few feet wide and have to do with our bike path, although we do probably have more properties than most people realize around the city. And we pay those taxes, and the law director's office assists us again with applying for tax exempt status. She processes health and life insurance bills for all the city employees, enrolling, updating, terminating from the plan, and starting last July, she got involved with our delinquent taxpayers. Now, we started this a couple years ago with the assistance of the law director's office, however, where Leanna came in has to do with the more difficult delinquencies, and so she has gotten on that. So she worked on 109 income tax accounts and referred them to the law director's office, and has been working very well with Tracy Means in that office. Then she collected over $50,000 on those particular accounts. She's also been coordinating and installation, technical support, the income tax withholding tool, which is a tool that we started last January for businesses to file their withholding taxes online. Most businesses, business you can do it quarterly, but that is our absolute main source of revenue for the city is withholding taxes, so it's very important. Payroll, each pay. Christie processes about 250 timesheets and lights about 280 checks, which include our payroll and deduction checks. An average payroll for the city is $377,000. Last year there were 7,558 payroll and deduction checks written. Gross payroll for 2011 was $9,804,000. Deductions for the year totaled $3,163,000. We had a total of 301 employees for 2011. Obviously, those numbers are not year-long because of the addition of summer help and especially pool personnel. There were 118 employees who received longevity checks for a total of $281,000. 51 employees received holiday checks for a total of $110,000. I've listed the top 20 wage earners for the city, which I'm not going to read, but you can look at that, it's interesting, and also lists how much they made. And Christie also emails accrual reports to department heads so they know how many sick vacation and comp days people in their department have. Finally, our income tax department has made quite a few changes this year, and it's just really hard to imagine when I look at this, like 3,400 returns posted. It's really a constant daily process, so the idea of someone taking over our income tax collection is just hard for me to imagine. We put checks in the bank every single day, and we processed 491 refunds for a total of $250,000 last year, which is pretty much average what we've had since I came into office, $1,000 last year, which is what we have budgeted for this year. 6,000 withholding payments, 2,000 OBG withholding payments, that's the Ohio Business Gateway where businesses can go online and make their payments through this, it's a centralized payment run by the state. Lot of tax SOPs were written or revised, and several of those have to do with our check scanning. We don't have to walk our checks across the street anymore. We have a scanner that we use to scan our checks, and the deposits go right into the bank. And we also are scanning our income tax files. We have to keep those permanently, same with timesheets. Most of our files, we have retention scheduled, but some of them we have to keep permanently, and we have a lot of them in files up in the attic in our building. Delinquency letters, 530 letters sent out last year. One thing to, I'd like you to know about that, is that all those letters have to be personalized with the individual's amounts, what year they're delinquent, how much penalty and interest they have, so none of those letters are exactly the same. And we sent 95 accounts to the law director for help with collections. And then, of course, we have other projects here as far as attending meetings about centralized tax collections. So I think that's all I'll go over right now for that, unless anybody has any questions.
Question? Come in.
Just a question on the next-to-last page at the bottom of the first listing on income tax information for 2011. So you mentioned 491 refunds. Those are income tax?
Yes.
So overpayments that might have occurred or adjustments that are made?
Yes, adjustments. Many times, there are quite a few people who, their company withholds their total amount of income tax, but if they don't work in the city, the entire year they can apply for a refund. If you're under 18, you can apply for a refund and get your money back. However, most businesses go ahead and withhold the full amount. So if you can imagine any businesses that have an office in Athens, but their employees mostly work outside the city limits, then they can apply for a refund. It's not necessarily a full refund. It might be 80%. We really don't give anybody full refund in those circumstances. We consider vacation and holidays as taxable, so it's usually around 20% we still keep, even if they, you know, keep their vehicle at their house, then they don't live or work in the city most of the time, but so that's, there are quite a few refunds that go on like that. There are always, yes, we've had quite a few come in already since they get their W-2s. If they're getting money back, they want that, and that's fine.
Okay, thank you.
So that's how the refunds work. And then businesses who have paid estimated reconciliations, then if it turns out that they don't owe us the full amount, we can issue, we issue a refund.
Okay, thanks.
Looking at the top 20 wage earners, that's including overtime, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
So maybe in the future you can break it down with base pay and then overtime, because I think that would help us keep track of overtime in the future, because I think that's a continual concern for Council.
Split that out, so you know?
Yeah, split it out, you know, because it's, seems...
Well, it's obvious when you see how many there are in what departments.
Yes, yep.
That it does have a lot to do with overtime.
Yep, so just, that would be helpful.
Sure.
Other comments? I'll go ahead, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you for, I mean, we have a lot of it here that you're, right, you didn't read everything, so we'll be looking at this.
Right, you can certainly email or call me if you have any questions later on.
Thank you. Last of all, Law Director Patrick Lang, can I report? Okay, we'll move ahead with ordinances for third reading. Ordinance 112. An ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to submit an application and enter into contract with the Ohio Department of Transportation for safe routes to school funds, introduced by Councilmember Gosney.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to move adoption of ordinance 1-12.
Second.
Thank you. So this ordinance is to allow the city to submit an application for a Safe Routes to Schools grant, which we've had very good success with in the past, helping us fund projects like sidewalks near elementary schools, safety lighting around the various schools in town here, as well as a couple other projects like a bike path spur and stairs that are currently being constructed behind the armory, if you'll notice, those went up very quickly. Looks like pretty good progress on that.
Questions concerned? All those in favor of ordinance 112, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. This ordinance is accepted. Ordinance 612. An ordinance closing a portion of Court Street from Union to State on Saturday, May 19th, 2012, from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. for the International Street Fair. Again, Member Gosney.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to move adoption of ordinance 612.
Second.
And this ordinance, simply as stated in the title, is to prepare the city for International Street Fair coming up this year on Saturday, May 19th. The street will be closed from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., which includes closing the street, setting up the blockades, and reriding traffic, and then also taking that back down. The only major note here, we're all familiar with this, the street fair, is that this will be the 30th anniversary event, so this is very special, International Street Fair this year.
All those in favor of ordinance 612, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Again, ordinance 612 is accepted. Ordinance 712. An ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 11 Business Regulations to include Chapter 11.11 Sweepstakes/Internet Cafes, introduced by Councilmember Fall.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we adopt 712.
Second.
This is an ordinance to go along with the zoning regulations that we passed last year to further regulate the business characteristics of sweepstakes and internet cafes. This will include a new chapter, 1111, which covers the various definitions, fees, and other miscellaneous that goes along with business regulations.
Does this outlaw sweepstakes in general?
No. It regulates them, and the zoning ordinance that we passed last year regulates them in terms of space within the city.
Thank you. All those in favor of ordinance 712, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 712 is accepted. Ordinance 812. An ordinance authorizing design construction and construction engineering of the North Court Infrastructure Improvements Project, improvements Project 259, introduced by Councilmember Butler.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to adopt ordinance 0812.
Second.
Thank you. This particular ordinance authorizes the city service safety director to advertise, accept bids, and enter into contracts for design, construction, and construction engineering of the North Court Infrastructure Improvement Project. This project will cost $432,000 with $320,000 of it paid for from issue two grant funding. So the city will be responsible, $56,000 of it from the street fund, and another $56,000 from the sewer storm water fund. There will be major improvements to the infrastructure underneath the street, old water system and piping, as well as an effort to re-brick the streets with reused brick from Old Jeff Hill. So that's an effort there to be mindful of our resources. Additionally, there will be some sidewalk assessments and improvements thrown into the overall project with the first block of Grosvenor Street, the first block of Franklin, as well as on East State Street from Stimson to Morris, and then all of Morris will also be looked at and assessed and repaired where there is determined failed sidewalks.
All those in favor of ordinance 812, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance 812 is adopted. Ordinance 1512. An ordinance providing for the issuance of $270,000 of notes by the City of Athens, Ohio, in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of renewing notes issued for the purpose of paying part of the costs of acquiring and installing energy conservation improvements at the city's community center and declaring an emergency, introduced by Councilmember Nysley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move adoption of ordinance 1512.
Second.
And we've talked about this project several times. This is part of the perfection project. We'll have one other ordinance tonight that will be dealing with this, but this is part of a larger project that totaled $425,700 worth of improvements to our city buildings. The note that was issued was originally, so of that $425,000, we borrowed $300,000, and at this time, as the note is coming due, we pay down part of the principal. Under the, with the auditor's advice, what we're doing is paying $30,000 of that $300,000 down, and that is then the issuance of the $270,000 of notes that we're reissuing at this point.
Questions or concerns? All those in favor of accepting ordinance 1512, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, ordinance 1512 is accepted. Now we're going to move into ordinances for second reading. Most of these ordinances, I will just read, and then we'll move on unless the sponsor has something to say or add to any of these. So ordinance 1812 is an ordinance granting renewal of a revocable license to the Athens County Convention and Visitors Bureau, 667 East State Street, to allow the placement of signs on the city right-of-way. Ordinance 1912. An ordinance granting renewal of a revocable license to Glenn Knutson, owner, 224 Columbus Road, to allow the placement of a sign on the city right-of-way. Ordinance 2012. An ordinance granting renewal of a revocable license to the Dairy Barn, 8,000 Dairy Lane, to allow the placement of a sign on the city right-of-way. Ordinance 2112. An ordinance closing a portion of Union Street between Congress and Court on Saturday, June 30th, 2012, from 2:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. for Ohio Brew Week. Ordinance 2212. An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the City of Athens, Ohio, to enter into an agreement with the Hocking Conservancy District for an easement for the existing bicycle path. Ordinance 2312. An ordinance, an ordinance accepting the donation of approximately .682 acres by Athens Health Realty LLC to provide a perpetual easement for the construction and maintenance of a sewer line and public highway and road purposes on the Columbus Circle Drive Access Road. Ordinance 2412. An ordinance accepting the donation of approximately .07 acres by Ann Cornwell and Michael Jinder to provide a perpetual easement for the Columbus Circle Drive Access Road. Ordinance 2512. An ordinance accepting the donation of approximately .03 acres by Parfit Properties LLC to provide an easement for construction and maintenance of the Columbus Circle Drive Access Road. Ordinance 2612. An ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to advertise and accept bids where necessary and enter into contracts for the Hickory Street Waterline Improvements.
Thank you, Mr. President. At this moment, I would like to move to suspend the rules for ordinance 2612.
Second.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
The reason for suspension would be after discussions with the Health Works Director, there was an interest in moving forward with this project, especially to take advantage of the mild winter we're having, and to assist them in moving forward with other projects as well, getting a head start on this one.
We're voting on suspension of the rules only. All those in favor of suspending the rules on this ordinance signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The rules have been suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. Can I move to then adopt ordinance 2612?
Second.
Thank you. Briefly, this is an ordinance that we've discussed both in committee and, I mentioned last week as well, too, that we might need to suspend, but essentially, just quite simply, some improvements to the water line in that area. Hickory Street, there's a new approved PUD project that will be taking place. The developer has agreed to share the cost of these water line improvements. I believe the $37,500 is the total, I believe.
Questions or comments on ordinance 2612? All those in favor of accepting ordinance 2612, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Ordinance 2612 is adopted. Ordinance 2912. An ordinance amending ordinance 01312, authorizing a contract with Perfection Group, Inc., and declaring an emergency.
Yes. Mr. President, I ask that we consider this under suspension.
Second.
And the purpose for this is that this is an amendment to our improvements to the city with the Energy Efficient Perfection Project, and the bill is now due for this added feature.
Okay. On the question of suspending the rules, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The rules have been suspended.
Mr. President, I ask that we adopt ordinance 2912.
Okay, ordinance has been moved and seconded. Did you want to?
This particular addition, it's part of, once again, this perfection project that brought about energy efficiency, energy efficient improvements to some of our city buildings. And I do have a correction. I earlier stated that our grand total on this project was 425,000. We did have several other modifications which we have covered in other ordinances. The particular ordinance tonight is... The particular ordinance tonight is approving $3,000 additional dollars towards the project, and this is for an upgrade in the code office windows.
All those in favor of accepting ordinance 2912 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, ordinance 2912 is adopted. We're moving into ordinances for first reading. An ordinance authorizing the Service Safety, ordinance 3012, I'm sorry, an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to submit an application and enter into a water supply revolving loan account agreement, designating a dedicated repayment source for the loan, and declaring an emergency. Member Nysley.
Thank you, Mr. President. We did begin the discussions of this and gave some background information last week, and these are for water improvement projects in three areas of the city. And this would be, what we would be doing is moving ahead under the advice of the auditor and deputy auditor, and actually, after an indication from the EPA, the agency that would be loaning the money to us, saying that they recommend we do, they would have approved this project, in theory, for us to apply, doing, moving ahead on all three projects at once. And these would be water line and hydrant upgrades for three areas of the city. We provided a map last week with the descriptions of those areas. Very briefly, to mention the streets again, Area 1 would be McGuffey, Ransom, and Harris, and we would be upgrading the water line and putting in four new hydrants where one hydrant exists. The second area would be Joneswood Terrace and River View. That would be upgrading the water line and installing seven new hydrants where six exist now. The third area would be West Union Street between Depot and Schaefer. We will add up to High Street if that might be a possibility with the funds that we have available. And it would be upgrading the water line and putting in four new hydrants. And as Councilmember Fall mentioned last week in our discussions, this helps for the general safety by providing enough hydrants for, in residential zones for homeowners, but also then in commercial areas, too, such as what we have on West Union, to make sure we have adequate fire protection. Water lines big enough to carry the water to get it there in case of an emergency.
Okay. Questions, Member Nysley? This is first reading for ordinance 3012. Thank you. Ordinance 3112, an ordinance amending the 2012 appropriation ordinance, introduced by Councilmember Nysley.
Yes, Mr. President, I ask that we consider this motion under suspension of the rules.
Here, a second?
Second. And the purpose for the suspension is that we have some transfers that need to be made in various accounts of the city to be able to make refunds.
Councilmembers, all of you in favor of suspending the rules, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the rules have been suspended.
Mr. President, I move adoption of ordinance 3112.
Second.
And this particular ordinance is detailed in your attached agenda tonight. What it does is sets up refund amounts for $1,000 in the water, sewer, and garbage funds, just as we described various other times when we need to refund amounts of money. The same kind of thing happens with different accounts. If a person has had a water account and then closes it out, moves to another location or moves to another city, then we need to be able to refund the money. $4,200 is to the CDBG fund, and this is for some property taxes that are due, and this is for Blackburn Road and Central Avenue property taxes that the city is due to pay out. The other amounts are for internal service fund contracts, one of them being $33,200 for our computer network software and maintenance contracts that we discussed in committee last week. And then the other one is $25,000 to the Cable Access Fund, and this is what's, the money comes into the city in terms of a proprietary account into the Cable Access Fund. And now we are in turn using it for web redevelopment of the city's website to make it more user-friendly for citizens, city council, city administration, and staff, we're hoping. It looks like a good design, and I know that many of you council members have been making comments and taking a look at the site already. Looks exciting.
Okay, ordinance 3112 has quite a bit of activity involved. Any questions here?
I might just add that in discussions with city employees regarding the website, too, as well, seems that there's going to be beneficial advantages financially, as well as assisting and aiding in internal communications for some of the departments. I support this.
Good point. Thank you. Gentlemen. Yes, you may.
Just one comment on the website. It's, you know, I think it's definitely something we need to do. One thing we haven't done yet is to allow online bill payment, which I would really like to see the city do at some point. I know there's a cost associated with it, but many cities our size do it, and I think it's, with as many students as we have in Athens, I think it's something we should offer, just to make things easier for everybody.
That's been talked about, as you well know, and yes, maybe we should visit that again. The utilities billing department would be the main area that, that would come in very handy, and they've recently upgraded their software and switched from the previous one and back on our CMI system, which is what we use in the auditor's office, and so that might help if we do that. There is a cost involved, and I think the sticking point is, do we absorb it or charge the customer?
Thank you, I forgot. All those in favor of ordinance 3112 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, ordinance 3112 is adopted. Ordinance 3212, an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title VII Traffic Code, Chapter 7.04.21, Right Turns Prohibited, introduced by all council members. Did we practice synchronized swimming or anything? No? Anybody? Member Fall.
Actually, it was introduced by me last week. This is a bit of housekeeping, making the code Title VII a bit more user-friendly for the Service Safety Director and the city engineer. And it's basically rewriting the code, removing specific streets so that they can put in streets as needed to prohibit right turn only.
And replace that listing with a?
General.
Yeah. Okay. This is first reading of ordinance 3212. Ordinance 3312, an ordinance amending the Athens City Code to establish Title 24 Wireless Telecommunications Facilities. Of all council members, again. Telecommunications.
This is something that has been in the works for at least a year to, a year and a half. I would like to say thank you to Paul Logue, who's done an outstanding job on this, and the planning commission, who's worked diligently. This is establishing a wireless telecommunications process for the city of Athens, regulating, with regulations and permitting process for the establishment of wireless cellphone towers, basically, on both private property and public city-owned property. In your agenda, you have 27 pages of it, and we have gone over this several times. Paul Logue has also given a fairly precise presentation on it. So if you have any other questions, we can get Paul. But last week, I, we went over all the questions that were brought up during Paul Logue's initial presentation, and I think it's good to go.
Mayor Wile? I will point out that in our comprehensive plan of 2005, one element that was mentioned was telecommunication towers as a point that we should be looking at. So this has been in mold over many years on how to do it properly and what we wanted to see. Again, the planner Paul Logue did a lot of work comparing other cities, conversations with ham radio operators, which are actually exempt from it. So there, you know, this has been, as I say, in the works for, at least on the horizon for a long time. I guess that's a pun, I guess, but it's not really. And thank you for, the law director, for actually doing a lot of the legalese on it as well.
This is first reading. As Member Fall mentioned, there are 27 pages, front and back, to this, and if anybody in the audience would like to review a copy of this, we could make it available through the clerk of court, through the clerk of council's office, or the planner's office, Paul Logue.
Perhaps we should stick it online.
Ah, even better, be something that works. So we'll try to get that on soon. Number Fall?
Yeah, I just was going to share, I've been informed that I have a nice reading voice. I could read the whole thing right now.
It's not that nice. I heard it.
It'd be like a bedtime story.
Horizon Telecom, Inc., for use of a portion of the city right-of-way along West Union and on Schaefer Street to provide a utility corridor to service a new substation. Member Fall.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a new revocable license, good for 10 years, going to Horizon Telecom. Basically, they want to put a couple poles, some underground right-of-way to bury fiber optic cable, and the new substation. And this has gone through the, both the Service Safety Director, the engineer's office, and the law office, to ensure that if any damage or such has been done, because we might have to dig up because there's sewer lines under it, that they will be responsible to reestablish their own infrastructure.
Mayor Wile?
If it's not too difficult, I'd like to get this under suspension. Horizon is working its way through the system right now, and they're, they're not doing this yet, but they'd like to.
Okay.
Again, it has to do with the weather. Everybody's trying to get everything. We have an early spring, it seems.
They're hot to try, right? So I move that we suspend the rules on 3412.
Second.
For the reasons of our lovely spring weather, and Mayor Wile has said.
The mayor requested that. Two very good reasons. Okay. All those in favor of suspending the rules signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Member Fall?
I move that we adopt 3412.
Second.
For the reasons that we've discussed, I think it's a, it's a community utility corridor that would enhance infrastructure within the city of Athens.
All those in favor of adopting ordinance 3412 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Okay, ordinance 3412 is adopted. We have a resolution for second reading. Resolution 112, a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor. Thank you, it's by Member Nysley. This is second reading. This is a pre-reading resolution. Announcements and other business, for asking for committee meetings next week.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. First, I'd like to just take care of some business regarding some appointments and recommendations that the mayor has requested for us to make for the Recreation Advisory Board. So here are some names that have been suggested. Former Mayor Rick Abel, Mr. James Petrick, Mr. Nick Clausen, Ms. Paige Alost, and Mr. Bill Walker. These are recommendations for the Recreation Advisory Board.
Okay. Are we accepting them?
I second it.
Okay. So do we have any questions or discussions about these additions to the Recreation Advisory Board? All those in favor?
I think the mayor had a comment.
Oh, mayor, I'm sorry.
Oh, no. Most of you know already. Mr. Petrick is the one I know the least. He's a professor in philosophy at Ohio University, has an interest in soccer. Mayor Abel, of course, has always been interested in the arts as well as recreation. Let's see, Paige, of course, is the Convention Visitors Bureau. She, of course, realizes there's an overlap with that. Example, that's Goba. Nick Clausen, of course, is with the Job and Family Services and has an interest in sports as well.
I think I covered it right.
Bill Walker?
Well, he's got a good legal mind, and he was on it at one time many, many years ago until, and has interest.
Also, he's very interested in a lot of sports.
Yes.
All those in favor of accepting these additions to the Recreation Advisory Board, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Congratulations to these new members of the Recreation Advisory Board. Time to go to work. Okay. Now, we're looking for any other announcements of committee meetings?
Finance.
Finance. At this moment?
I'm sorry.
And, and, and we will be having a presentation as part of that committee meeting from the Athens Convention Visitors Bureau. Their annual report.
Thank you. I'm sure we'll have others.
Protection presentation.
Our clerk reminds us that we will have a presentation about well hood protection activities also.
Development.
Mayor?
We still have the AEP franchise, right-of-way franchise that's out there. I don't know where it is right now, and it kind of fell through the cracks last, at the end of last council. We had an extension on it. You still write away from AEP. I don't know whether it's in my office, your ballpark, or your ballpark, so I think there's some question of what needs to be done on that.
Yeah, I spoke with Paula last week. We should be getting something set up for that.
Okay, somewhere along the line, it needs to be reestablished.
In the works?
It is, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. Do you have your hand up? No? No one over there? Okay, the next issue is opportunity for citizens to speak on legislative items. And I just want to make mention of an addition, two additions, actually. A couple weeks ago, we took the timing process away from the clerk and me, and we placed it in the hands of the, of the TV people behind the dark glass there. Three minutes. All, all members who'd like to speak to council have three minutes. We're also, we have put a signup sheet up there. Our clerk is required to keep notes of all discussions that go on in council chambers, and often she has trouble understanding the name and address of people who are speaking to us. So there's a signup sheet there. Please, if you're going to speak to us, sign there, print and/or sign legibly both your name and address. Timing will not start until you start speaking. Okay? We're not going to penalize you any time that it takes to be as legible as possible. Okay. So now, opportunity for citizens to speak on legislative items. Sir?
Before I speak, I'd like to hand out some literature to the council and the mayor here.
Thanks.
If you would, as I speak, just.
Two-year terms, three terms. Wow. They're not happy. Never occurred to me. Thanks.
My name is Dane Waller, and I'm from 155 Morris Avenue, and.
Don't forget to sign in, please.
I'll sign in. And I am here with Public Health Concern. I've been here many times, addressing the issue of water fluoridation. And I would like the council to follow along with me as I read this article from, or excerpts from this article from 2001. If McLaughlin's organization, Athens Safe Water Group, can deliver 450 valid signatures to the Athens City Auditor by Monday, city voters will have a chance in November to remove the city's 1997 fluoridation ordinance. This is the latest development in a controversy that extends back more than 30 years. In 1966, Athens City Council rejected a local ordinance to fluoridate the city's water supply. Three years later, the Ohio General Assembly passed a law requiring the public, the public water supplies serving 5,000 or persons be treated with fluoride. However, the law also provided a three-month window during which individual communities could let local voters decide on fluoridation through a ballot initiative. Athens took the evangelist loophole in 1970, when local citizens voted against adding fluoride to the water supply. In 1996, with council considering a fluoridation ordinance. In 1996, with council considering a fluoridation ordinance, Athens Law Director Gary Hunter asked the Ohio Attorney General to provide a legal opinion on the following three questions. One, did the 1973 amendment to the state fluoridation law void the 1970 initiative that were making fluoridation mandatory for Athens? Two, if so, do local citizens have the right to put another initiative on the ballot to block fluoridation? Three, if fluoridation is not mandatory for Athens under state law, can city council enact an ordinance allowing fluoridation of the city's water supply? The Attorney General's Office refused to issue an opinion. Hunter then issued his own legal opinion in which he advised city council that it had the right to pass a fluoridation ordinance, but that this ordinance would be subject to removal by ballot initiative. Council subsequently passed a fluoridation ordinance despite strong opposition by some community members. It is this 1997 ordinance that McLaughlin and others would like to see repealed. Go down a little bit. McLaughlin recalled that when 1997 ordinance was before city council, a number of citizens spoke out against it and provide council with evidence on the dangers of fluoride, which he claims the council ignored. Sounds a little too similar right now, 15 years later. With all the information that people gave him about fluoride, they did nothing. McLaughlin alleged it disappeared as it went into a vacuum or a black hole. Law Director Hunter said Tuesday that the initiative gets on the ballot and is passed, it will repeal the existing fluoridation ordinance. Bottom line, they can repeal the ordinance we did in 97, he acknowledged. Now, there it is. I'm saying, as a concerned citizen, I've come here repeatedly, and 15 years later, the citizens still have the same view they had from the '60s, from the '70s. The citizens do not want this in our water supply. We have voted against it, and then the city council passed an ordinance under the law director of that time, his legal opinion saying they could pass it, but it is subject to removal by ballot initiative. So I would urge the council to please, I'll finish up real quick in this packet. I have attached an ordinance that we're going to put on the ballot for referendum this November. If the council decides that it's not in their best interest to just do a gesture of good faith and pass this ordinance themselves, which they did in 1997, to put it in the water, pass another one to remove it, all the same. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak? Sir?
Abe Alasoff, P.O. Box 2323, Athens. As my buddy said, Dane, a lot more needs to be said. The law director, the former law director, said that it's, to his legal interpretation, that it can be repealed. I know the mandate from 1970 took a Supreme Court case with the state of Ohio versus the city of Clinton or Clinton, and Clinton flat-out missed the referendum that Athens had, the 270-day referendum, which Athens passed, but Clinton just decided to flat-out miss it. And then they didn't want to continue to, they didn't want to add fluoride to the water after that, and were forced to by the Supreme Court. Athens is a different precedent, and I think it would be different at the Supreme Court level because Athens actually passed that referendum three months prior, saying, "We don't want it," and then city council puts it in. So I think that's a completely different precedent. We have one city that the Supreme Court is basing their decision off that just flat-out missed the referendum, and we have Athens that actually took the initiative, put it on the ballot, and we voted no against, not that time, but two times, that time plus two times prior. Also, if, it's a public health risk. We have, it was done with the best of intentions, I'm sure, but we have now, new science out that shows that it is not as good as we were once told. Plus, it's an economic damper. I mean, we're spending just for the chemical, close to $20,000 yearly. That's a part-time employee job during the summer. I know, we just talked about that. Crystal Kennard, I've spoken with her on several occasions, the most recently here in Siemens parking lot in the morning, saying she is willing to send each and every one of you pictures of the water fluoridation administering room, where the paint is being eaten off the walls, and the corrosion is going on inside this room. According to her, she says it's pretty good compared to others she's seen. So she was kind of flabbergasted by that. I know Councilmember Gosny, in the past, has showed opposition to this as a council member and also as a citizen beforehand. I saw some previous letters to the others. I'd like to see him maybe with the collaboration of some of the other council men and women, hold a forum, maybe with the Ohio Public Health, pulling a dentist or two that are for and against fluoridation, maybe even just calling Dr. Paul Connet again, emeritus professor of chemistry at St. Lawrence University. Hold a forum, but we have it on, we have the referendum we'd like to see on the ballot. You guys all have it. If you guys could introduce legislation, at least put it on the ballot for us to vote on. You guys don't even have to vote it out, but at least put it on the ballot and give the citizens a chance to say whether we want it or not, and if it's been like the last three times, it'll be a resounding no once again. Thank you.
Sir?
My name's Jared Wren. I live at 6099 Hobnall Road. Before me this evening to join my voice to the opposition of the policy of mandatory fluoridation of the Athens City water supply. Mandatory water fluoridation is a gross violation of the fundamental right of the ability to control what does or does not go into one's body. The process of fluoridation has been rejected by the majority of Western European nations and more than 250 communities across North America since 1990 by a small group of informed citizens and concerned people like the ones in front of you tonight. The same will be the case for Athens. More and more people every day become aware of the fact that a toxic byproduct of fertilizer production is being dumped into their water at their expense and without their consent. Fluoride is chemical, not a vital nutrient, and there are no biological processes in humans or animals that depend on it. The chemicals involved in water fluoridation are illegal to dispose of by dumping in the world's oceans by international law, yet are approved for human consumption and mandated against the will of the population at large. Fluoride that is ingested through the water supply has been widely regarded as having no benefit to dental health, and the doses level are entirely uncontrollable, leading to massive overexposure. Upon further examination of the facts, using critical thinking and objective reasoning, people all over the world are standing up for their essential rights to clean water and the right to make their own decision regarding their health and that of their families. I implore the members of this body to come together and resist the top-down mandates of the EPA and to help uphold Athens' heritage as a forward-thinking, health-conscious, and self-reliant community. The removal of fluoride represents an opportunity to provide other municipalities an example of a healthy local government that is subservient to the well of its community rather than the other way around. It is not too late to do the right thing, and I encourage the members of this body, the people watching this on television, and the people in this room, to support the petition and referendum initiative that was just mentioned, and to research the Fluoride Action Network at www.fluoridealert.org. Please think of your own health and the health of future generations and do the research for yourself, and give the people of Athens the opportunity to make their own health decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Other audience members?
Hi, my name is Dane McCarthy at 9930 Montheret Road, Millfield, and I wanted to add my two cents worth about the issue at hand, and that would be the addition of hexafluorosilic acid to the Athens City water supply. One thing I wanted to point out that I don't think has been touched on much is that the hexafluorosilic acid is not pharmaceutical grade. It comes directly from the fertilizer plant, and it also contains a whole cocktail of other bits and pieces of heavy metals and other toxic chemicals that have nothing to do with, even the dentists would agree that these are toxic and that adults, and not to mention children, should not be exposed to this. Now, if someone really wants to expose their child to sodium fluoride, they can go to CVS and they can buy the fluoride rinse and have their children wash it around in their mouth. But you are told on the back of the package, if they accidentally swallow any of this, to immediately contact a poison control center. Another important point is that the studies that I've looked at have shown that the improved levels of tooth decay, the decreased levels of tooth decay that result from, that we're seeing is not from fluoridation of the water, but from the income level of the municipality. In other words, in the poorer municipalities, you're seeing higher levels of tooth decay among the children and the adults. That is where the correlation lies, not in the amount of fluoride or hexafluorosilic acid in the water. So it's really, there really is no correlation whatsoever. And really, this sort of is part of a larger trend that we're seeing that's been going on in the United States for decades, and that is, now that so many corporations have monopolies, they can dispose of their toxic waste with impunity in the cheapest method. And if they can actually sell it, then that's even better. That would be the ideal way. If you can find a use for your toxic waste sludge, and of course, we've seen over and over and over again that corporations and the military and even governments, municipalities will actually deliberately, accidentally, just sort of lose all these toxic things, like solvents that get poured down storm drains. We've all seen this. This has happened in Athens. That's it. Thank you.
Other audience members?
My name is Toren Jacobson. I live on 8133 Dairy Lane. Thank you again, council, and again, we are here to ask you to reconsider your position on water fluoridation. Again, you find yourself here listening to us and asking why do they keep coming back? Why do these activists for the public good just give up? And as a council, you must sift through other complex issues like revenue, safety, and of course, the immense threat fracking brings to the county. Why should we even be talking about water fluoridation? And the reason is, not only is water fluoridation an environmental issue and a public health issue, which fluoride poisoning has always been, but it's the biggest, but the biggest reason is simply because the solution is easy. And as we, and as the evidence has already been laid out, we have an easy solution that will not burden the city with expensive EPA fines or regulation. Unlike fracking, which is extremely complex and guided by the private sector, water fluoridation is only dependent upon the citizens and you. You have the control over the issue, and you have seen a negative effect provided in research given by us. We continue to come here only because it is a concern that can easily be addressed. If every issue were as simple as turning off the hexafluorosilic acid, believe me, I would be here talking about much more than water fluoridation. Removal of this sentence, all it requires is little courage. If city government is afraid to challenge authority, as we citizens are doing now, what's the point of having a city government if the local citizens' concerns are automatically illegitimate to federal regulations? If we can't self-govern, why act as if we can govern at all? Allow a vote or ordinance or something to take place, and thank you for listening and have a great evening.
Thank you, sir. Other audience members?
My name's Terri Anne Smith, and I live at, I actually live out of the city limits, but I have a business in town where I use water. And I, is this a chance where I can ask questions, or do I just have to speak?
Just go through what you have to say.
Okay. I've researched this fluoridation issue a lot. I was gonna, I didn't have time. I just kind of heard about this meeting and this spur of the moment, and there, next time I come, I'm going to come again, I'm going to bring a bunch of paperwork for you. But there was actually a scientist that, back in the '50s, promoted fluoride as a health benefit, and recently, I'll find, I'll find the articles on this, but recently, maybe two or three years ago, he came out and said that fluoride, that he was wrong and that it's really a horrible health risk. So one of the promoters of it from way back when is now saying that it's bad news. And I'd like to also point out that there's a difference between the fluoride that the waste industries are selling you guys to put in our water. There's a difference between that fluoride and the fluoride, there's the sodium fluoride and calcium fluoride. And calcium fluoride has some minor benefits, but that's not what's being put in our water. Basically, nuclear waste, industrial waste is being put in the water. And I have a filter, I have a ceramic filter at my store that if I drink any water at my store, I put it through that ceramic filter, and it doesn't get all the fluoride out probably, but my filter's supposed to be white, but after a few weeks, it turns a greenish color. And that's probably from the fluoride, because fluoride, I think, like deposits of it have like a greenish tint, but anyway, people that are living in the city that don't have the convenience of filtering their water through like a ceramic filter, it's kind of a pain and it's time-consuming. I take the time out of my day to filter. I won't drink any water out of the taps of anywhere in the city, and I only go to restaurants that serve filtered water. And, but if you take a shower in it and you don't have a filter under shower, that fluoride and whatever else, there's other things in there that are, that are being put in there that are bad, goes right into your skin as you're taking a shower. So if you're trying to be organic, and you're trying to be healthy, and you're trying to use natural soaps, you know, when you shower, and then when you get in your shower and you're getting, you know, all these toxic chemicals pumped into your skin, it's really annoying, and I don't understand why any of you would put up with that. Do you folks live in the city and drink and shower in this water? And really, you should research it and consider what's going into your body. I mean, I mean, there's, but anyway, next time I come, I'm going to come more prepared and bring some better information, but that's just kind of spur of the moment, what I was thinking as I was sitting there, so.
Thank you.
Uh-huh. Thank you.
Other audience members wish to speak? Not tonight? Okay. We will declare our agenda complete, and we're adjourned.